At this time I'd like to call the order, the Housing Authority of Champaign County, Board of Commissioners Reverend Meeting for Thursday, August 30th, 2018, times a little after two. Please call the roll.
Chairman Lewis. Vice Chair Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Obuchowski. Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Adair. Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Chenoweth.
Present.
We have a call. Next item, approval of agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, but we may have some items moved around the agenda to...
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Jim, I just wanted to suggest, and since we have a few folks here, to do public comment on agenda items, that we move number nine to just above the approval of the minutes.
Yeah, I did.
You did do that?
I marked it in, yes.
Okay, so I just didn't know if it needed a motion before the board or not to make that change.
Okay, we will make that change.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay. I'll call.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chenoweth.
Yes.
Okay, next item. Public comments on agenda items only. Do we have any, one of the audience would like to make comments on agenda items? Seeing none. Okay, next item. Do the presentation of 2017 financial audit, Milletta &amp; Company.
I just wanted to introduce Jason Gill and Mike Milletta from Milletta &amp; Company, who are going to go over, not in full, the audit, they're in a draft right now of the 2017 audit, but during a presentation to highlight some portions of the audit. So, let's have them come up. How are you?
Good.
Okay, so what Jason did is we usually put together a PowerPoint, which takes excerpts from the audited draft audit, presenting it out there, and we're going to go through this, and which will give you a very good picture of where the Housing Authority is at through the audit, through the, for the year ended September 31st. So included in the...
Hold on one second before you get started. Make sure you talk into the mic, so, because we're being recorded, and all the commissioners should have a handout of the PowerPoint that's being presented. Thank you.
Okay, so the, what's included in your financial statements is our auditor's report, our opinion on your financial statements. And we've conducted that opinion, and what we have come to is that you have a good opinion of it. In our opinions, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So that's a clean opinion for your financial statements for the year. So that's in the audit report. There's other information, because you're a housing authority, you receive federal awards, but the audit of the financial statements is a good opinion.
Could you briefly just explain what the opinion is for individuals that may not understand auditing terms?
Sure. So what we do is we review your financial statements and issue our opinion on them. There's four different opinions you can get. You can get an adverse opinion that says things are not presented fairly. You can get a scope limitation that says we can't issue an opinion. There's something missing. We could qualify our opinion saying everything is good except for, or we can issue an unmodified opinion which says everything is presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. And that's the opinion that we've issued on your financial statements.
Thank you.
I'm going to see the bottom paragraph.
Okay, so then what we'd like to point out is, here is the statement of revenues. This is your statement of revenue expenses. So basically, your profit and loss statement for the audit. Now, the audit's not comparative. We're not allowed to present it in a comparative nature, but for you, we always put the previous year in, so we can compare, because we believe in the value of comparing the two years together. We'll note a few things, and Jason will get specific in some areas for you. But if we look at the bottom line, there is a surplus fairly the same in both years, 2.8 in the 2017. And also, if we look at operating income, it's slightly higher in this year, still positive, and that is after depreciation. So your operation is in the black for both of the comparative years.
So in both cases, you know, in '16, you took in $2 million more in revenues than you spent, and in '17, even better, about 2.5 million in revenues than you spent. One of the main drivers and differences here, and I highlighted up there in the squared box, is you have some fees for services, which really is an extra $600,000 in developer fees that you earned from Providence. It's a one-time, well, there's some more developer fees that you can earn, but there's a one-time source of income there. So you couldn't, again, you couldn't expect that next year in the future, but it does affect your operating results this year. Adds to your surplus, as you'd expect. We've also highlighted a couple of areas of note. Two of the main ones, in the blue arrows on the side there, is rental revenue. So rental revenues are increasing for the year, a substantial amount, and we'll talk about that. Obviously, a good indication of management and managing of your assets. And another big change there is housing assistance payments. Those are your payments to landlords. There's a large increase there, and we'll talk about that on further slides. The other one being, the green arrow now, is just operating grants. So that's your main source of funds there. We'll talk about where it comes from. But basically, from an operating standpoint, you took in $2.5 million more this year than last year. So an improvement from prior years. Expenses are pretty flat, so it's showing good cost management and good realization of income, of revenues. So we'll get on to the next page. We won't go into any more specifics on this page. The next page, a lot of numbers here. But basically, what we wanted to do, and we'll start with the green arrows all the way on the right there. If you trust me on this, or if you want to flip back, that's the same amount of operating revenues that we saw in the income statement, saying that roughly you're getting $15 million a year.
I think, that page, you guys see that page in your packet?
No, I do not see that page.
Yeah, I don't think that page is in our printout.
Yeah.
That page is not in our printout.
It's not here.
Oh, it's a very important page. It was printed double-sided.
Yeah.
It's not on there.
All right, we'll get it, we'll get it. But let's just go through it. Once again, what Jason's looking at here is just your operating grant revenue, okay?
So in '17, bringing in $15 million, about, compare that to '16, and it was roughly the same. But we want to look at kind of where, what types of programs it came in on, and where the money's going. So in 2017, the biggest change here, we'll look at the red arrows, is that you're bringing in capital grants, 2.7 million. You drew down three years' worth of capital grants here. You don't typically see that in a period. If you look at '16, you didn't have any. So your revenue includes 2.7 million extra revenue this year. So if we want to compare that to the other column, and there's a box there, HTV HAP, you had $10 million in revenue. That's revenue brought in to pay for landlords, typically. If you compare that to last year, you were at 12.7, so there's a large decrease. Question would be why? It's out of your control here. This is HUD for you. This is HUD implementing cash management, where basically, they're saying, they're not going to allow you to accumulate funds anymore. They're only going to give you what you need. So if we looked at '16, that box, the 12.7, if you look three numbers down, you had a $3.5 million surplus on that money. Basically, meaning you got 12.7 in revenues to pay for landlords and other activities of the organization, but you didn't spend 3.5 of it. So you fast-forward to this year, you had $10 million, you spent most of it, 9.8. And that's basically HUD's way of forcing, forcing you to use the reserves that you have. So now, I'm going to look at one of the other differences here, because typically, what we want to do is compare, we'll go to public housing, that first column there, PH subsidy. You get $870,000 a year, typically, and we compare, basically HUD says, you know, you're awarded 870, where did you use the money? How'd you do? In this case, we would compare it to what you actually spent out, but we want to put one, one big, we want to highlight one big change this year, and that's the RAD HAP. Here, we have a conversion this year. It's the RAD conversion, as you guys have heard probably and discussed for months on end, for years now. But basically, this is it coming into fruition. You're spending 1.2 million in HAP expense, and you are going and transferring it to MGDC RAD, which is your related entities, the Maple Grove Development Corpse. So what's happening here is you're, HUD's allowing you, and you're electing to take, see those two red arrows, that you are, you're getting your traditional public operating subsidy and your capital subsidy, and they're allowing you to combine it all together and give it to the properties all at once. And what we're seeing now, and basically, this is the first year of transition, where a public housing subsidy is quote-unquote "losing" 700,000, because it's really, it's spending all its money, and it's giving it to MGDC RAD. So see how MGDC RAD has $700,000 in surplus? It's, again, it's a funding mechanism of receiving funds in a new format and allowing you to capitalize those and, again, fix up your units, et cetera. So it's a little bit of change from last year, but at the end of the day, you're moving one money, pot of money, to the other and capitalizing on it. Otherwise, we'll keep going on some other important metrics. There we go. This is not in the audit report.
That should be...
Yeah, that's next page.
Do you have this one?
Mm-hmm.
So what we want to talk about, we talked about how, all the funds you got in, and now we want to evaluate, how are you guys doing as an MTW agency? You had certain metrics and benchmarks that you guys have been trying to, goals that you've been meeting, and where do you stand?
Are you meeting your goals?
Right, are you meeting your goals? So we did it in two different areas. First, we talked about this, but tenant revenue and HAP expense. So we're going to stick on tenant revenue, that's that first section there. Tenant revenue's increased by $100,000 this year, 13%. So why? We know you add a little bit of units. You have some new units this year, Mahaman, et cetera. But basically, if you look at that per-unit month in the center, the average rent, tenant rents have gone up by 10%. And basically, what that's showing us, if you look down at that last little 0% there, is it's not that you're increasing occupancy. Your occupancy's pretty steady and high, at 97% utilized or occupied, is that the tenant rents are increasing as you're meeting your goal of tenant self-sufficiency. And this is evident here, in that, again, you're reducing your reliance on the federal government to give you funds to support your programs and your activities, and it's shown in the increase in tenants. So that's one metric.
Can I add something there? We just ran our numbers, and it showed that our average income per tenant is $15,600. The national average for traditional public housing authorities is around $12,000. So that's also a major indicator.
Right. So it's showing that, again, you're exceeding the national standards. And really, what's the goal of this, right? So, yes, the tenant's income has increased, but what that means basically is you're allowed to take your current resources and provide them elsewhere, and help additional tenants, and things of that nature. And that's when we get to the second part. So we talked about tenant, and now we're talking about expenses out. So these are landlord payments. So payments to landlords increased by almost 7%, almost $700,000 this year, and we want to say why? I mean, is it getting more costly to perform the services? Well, in this case, I'm going to wait till you... Well, in the last case, we said tenant rents were increasing because tenant incomes were going up, so their rents were getting higher. Here, if we go to that per-unit increase, that increase is very small, only 1%. So what that tells us is that your landlord expenses on a per-unit basis are actually probably lower than inflation, only at 1%. It's showing that basically, again, the tenant incomes are helping to keep the cost of HAP payments down. They keep them flat, so to speak. So even though you've, so your utilization has gone up 6%, so there's a rounding, that's accounting for your increased HAP. So that's a good increase. It's not being increased because you have inflationary constraints. It's increased because you're utilizing the program. And I think that's key here, that you're at 86% utilization, an increase from 81, because of the last two years, that number's been going down. And if you remember from past discussions, that was a concern, in that, you know, you're spending money and you're developing, but your utilization and providing funding for residents has been going down in the past, and finally, that's turning the corner. So not only have you increased utilization, which helps fund more activities for you guys as an organization, but you're doing it at roughly the same cost. If you factor in inflation, less cost. So another good, successful metric to show that, you know, the move-to-work procedures are working, basically. Keep going. You have delay here. There it goes. Point of cash flow, basically, you know, we said you made 2.5 million. That's exactly what you got in cash. So there's not much to go in here, other than, you know, you have 6 million in cash, which is obviously a good thing, and you've generated a large chunk of that this year.
So your surplus is decreasing to cash for the year.
Basically, what you want to see.
If not, you want to try to understand what happened to it. But in this case, we don't have to really look any further.
Lots of numbers there, but the bottom line holds true. And we'll talk about some of this on the further slides. So now, your balance sheet, this is your statement of where you were at, your financial health as of December 31st, 2017, in comparison to '16. And we're going to look at some of the main numbers. Down at the bottom, that's your net worth, so to speak. We went from $28 million in '16 up to $31 million. Well, I look at a couple of the factors there. We're going to go up, jump up to capital assets. That's how much you have of your $31 million invested in buildings. So again, it's showing that you're continuing to invest in buildings, in building improvements. So that money's not just going on administrative or maintenance expenses, it's going into your hard assets, really hoo-ya, right? So an increase of over 2 million there is pretty sizable. If we go up to the top there, just wanted to point out again that the increase in cash, so we're going from 2.2 million in unrestricted cash up to 5.5. Some of that is, you know, cashing in, investments, and kind of organizing your funds. But most of that financial health there is in your MGDC properties. I mean, that's by design, right? So because you are ratting those properties, you've put in operating and replacement reserves and things of that nature. What you should see going forwards, basically, as an organization, is that your properties have all the hard assets, all the cash, and the move-to-work funds is basically your revenue generator. It's the way you get in money, you spend money, but you don't really retain assets there. All the assets end up going to where the physical buildings are, where they're needed, basically. And you'll see that as we get through. So basically, very healthy balance sheet, good.
Worth 31 million on paper, and we'd also point out, your current assets are 6.9 million, and your current liabilities are 600. So you're hitting 10x over this particular year. You know, you were very healthy in the previous year, but that was about six times.
Right.
So you have a good financial picture as of 12/31/17, in addition to providing all that capitalization and improvement in your assets, because a lot of times, that will affect your ability to manage cash in a heavily capitalized, intensive entity of real estate.
To be able to do that on your own, or largely on your own, is unique to the industry, basically. And that you're able to kind of use a lot of, leveraging funds as well, but to be able to not only keep a healthy enough reserve on your own in cash, but also be able to invest in the buildings at the same time is unique. So we talked about, you have the 5.5 million in cash, unrestricted cash. What else? So we have some additional reserves that aren't physically yours, but you have available to you. So in addition to the 5.5 million that you physically hold, there's another 8.7 million that HUD has basically designated to your agency for use in, you know, future commitments, as the next section will show, and future obligations, et cetera. This is HUD's implementation of cash management. Remember, I said, in the past, you had brought in 2.7 million extra in HAP. Well, they didn't give it to you this time. They're holding it aside in their own coffers and waiting for you to tell them that you need it, basically. So one of the ways to tell them you need it is you get into certain commitments. So we talked about $8.7 million in reserves above. You've committed 7.8, roughly 7.8 of those. The first two numbers there totaling 6 million is really the undrawn future commitments that you're basically using, or earmarking, 8.7 towards. Just as an aside, that RAD conversion rehab, that's the amount remaining on the conversion piece for the RAD properties. So you already have the cash, you just haven't spent it yet.
Meaning, that's uncommitted. It's uncommitted.
It's committed, it just hasn't been spent, but you do have the cash.
Okay.
You have contracts for it. You probably spent it already as of today.
Well, this is as of 12/31/17.
Right.
But the important thing is that HUD's retaining everybody's funds, they're not giving them to you. You have to earn them, or come up with ways of spending them. HUD doesn't want everyone to have the cash. They're using the cash to fund the government, right? And you're committing it, you're improving your property, you're doing what you're supposed to do. Other entities aren't, but...
You have to utilize it or you should lose it.
Right. So we always want to point out what you have to use or lose, and you're keeping pace with that. That's one of the other matrices we want to measure and report to the board.
So that means we are organizing cash well?
Yes.
That's good.
Doing your job.
We want to touch base, we talked about, we keep saying MGDC and RAD. We wanted to show you kind of the financial look of what MGDC is now, which is, again, you're nonprofit holding a lot of these physical assets, that the blue is a board control, but it's in a separate legal entity technically. But we just want to look at some of the big numbers. All the way on the right, I mean, those are all your former AMPs, MGDCs.
Right, so you remember these names, now they're in this entity, right?
Right. Same.
In addition to the new development, that were never in the Housing Authority, and these that transferred over.
Right. So in order to get here, the entity, you as an authority contributed, it's on the bottom of the right there, $11.5 million, basically. Combination of buildings, the value of the buildings that were brought into MGDC, and physical cash reserves that were brought in as part of the RAD conversion and commitment to these buildings, to these assets, really. So just a big number, $11.5 million, shows, you know, of the 12.2 in net assets. It's showing, basically, it's the first year that these entities got off the ground. So we wanted to show kind of the size of them. We said it was about $32 million as an overall organization, if you remember that number on the balance sheet. $12 million of that is physically the nonprofit MGDC structure. Same thing, just to point out the cash on it. So we saw the 12.2 million, we just talked about the same number as on the other slide. All the way up top, you said you have 5.5 million as an authority. MGDC's portion is the 3.4 million. Just wanted to relate the level the MGDC's portion is in all this. Going to move on to the, comparing the discreetly presented component unit, that is Oakwood Trace. From years past, this is the one that you control, but you don't wholly own. We just wanted to point out some of the differences here, that basically, it has, it gets by, it has flat revenue, it has consistent operating results, but what we don't have is, as you see the brackets there, that it isn't able to meet depreciation or capital needs on its own. And this is very similar to a lot of tax credit deals, but basically, to show the comparison from, you as an organization that's bringing in 2.5 million through the move-to-work versus one standalone property that's nearly not expected, nor is it cash-flowing completely on its own, but is cash flowing enough. I wanted to point out one other thing on the investments down there, is when we were looking, and I didn't point it out, but the investment income on your income statement, $300,000, really, those are just the loans that are owed from Oakwood Trace. So you're getting $300,000 in interest revenue, but it's really just from Oakwood, and it's not being paid to you, so to speak. It's incurring...
It's an accrual of interest, it's not actual cash.
Right.
But it also is the leverage on the Oakwood Trace property because of that debt that is owed back to the Housing Authority.
It basically cements your claim on that property, helps you get the investor out, hopefully, eventually. That's a whole other discussion. So we just want to point out, this is, just as a discreetly presented, it just means that you don't have complete control. So we pointed out to you so that you know that it's still encompassed under your responsibilities, but it's not nearly to the level of the primary government, who is, you know...
Unlike the nonprofit that's a blended unit, or actually consolidated, but these are assets that you, you know, you have, and will obtain more.
So this, you're basically doing a compare and contrast. So it's on the left, it is Housing Authority-owned properties. On the right is this blended property, and you're trying to show that the operating revenue expenses, differences between the two?
For the discreetly presented.
Which is just Oakwood Trace?
Correct.
Okay.
We already went through the...
Yes, yeah, so you're just putting the left column for comparison purposes?
Yes.
The right one, yes.
Yes.
But also, we should...
Right. So, we did that for comparison, and I just wanted to point out, we talked about 32 million as an authority as a whole, but now, if we look at the discreetly presented component unit, the main number to look here, because, you know, because of the uniqueness here with the debt of Oakwood being held by the Housing Authority, it creates some unique numbers. But the basic, the basic numbers, that second number up, last year's about 32,000, this year's 19,000 positive, that's basically where you stand since inception. So since inception, the property's been able to generate, well, it's down to about $20,000 in net profits, net retained income, so to speak. So if we talk, if we rewound this two years ago, those numbers were bracketed. They were bracketed for years, because the property had problems paying its bills. So it's still showing that it's positive. Now, those numbers aren't large numbers, but at least as a board, you can see, well, you know, the property's able to pay its own bills, it's able to operate on its own without getting, you know, additional funds from the agency, if, you know, if need be.
Well, because you took over the management.
Because you took over management. Right. But it's a big contrast from the authority on its own, and really, these entities, these properties aren't designed to really retain cash. You don't want to retain cash there because the investor wants their piece. They're really just, hopefully, there to keep the property in good working order, right, and have an asset. But really, kind of break even, and you're kind of almost perfectly there. All right. Lastly, we'll get to the next section. So we talked about your financial statements. The other part of the audit, required audit, is compliance. So not only do we say, well, you have an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, but we're required there in the separate section to basically audit compliance over your federal programs. We... We also issued an unmodified opinion there, so we're saying you complied in all material respects to your major programs that we tested, but we did find a significant deficiency that we'll talk about. And then below that is, those are the two programs that we tested, which Move to Work is basically all of you.
Basically, the majority of your funds.
Yeah.
No is a good answer to the government. So if there's one yes, it's a little hard to mark that.
Just a quick peek at where that number, that's the 14, 9, 8, 6, that number's been shown a couple times, that you're operating subsidy. Basically, we tested 14.6 million of that plus the 300,000, so we're issuing an opinion on 99.99% of your funds this year. And getting there, so, we'll start with the prior year. Prior year, if we recall, we had two findings in 2016. We had primary income calculation issues, causing errors in tenant rents and HAP payments, and the reporting aspect of that, not doing recertifications timely, changing the results from the Move to Work annual reporting. If you look there in the status, they both say corrective action taken, meaning you've completed both these. There is a caveat on that first one that basically says, however, see this following finding. And basically, we'll go through it, but basically what this is saying is, the issue has been cleared, but it occurred during the audit period. So we were able to, through audit procedures, determine that all errors that we found, the staff had already found and corrected. But unfortunately, it occurred, it was already there during the period. So we still list it as a finding, and that if you go in the center there, question costs, that you're analyzing income, we found $4,635 in payments that were made in excess of what we determined should have been made, and the staff agreed and had found as well. There's the difference here from prior years. In the past, we had concerns, we had numerous income calculation errors, as we said. Here, we didn't necessarily note income calculation errors at all. The main issue here was selection and payment of a certain flat rent, which shows extreme progress, honestly, in that of the 45 we tested this year, only one of them had an income calculation error. And that was a very minimum error, didn't even result in a question cost. But that of the 45 we tested, that there were four of them that basically are selecting the wrong flat rents, basically, because it says three. So the difference here from, you know, the improvements from last year, basically, in that the staff has shown that they're, you know, calculating income correctly. All the documents have, you know, been put in the files, you know, contains enough to comply with the program.
There's been a lot of improvement.
But during this transition time, there's still $4,600 that we found that went out. So since we found that, we had to present it to the board, basically, at the end. And our recommendation was that, there's really no further action needed, but we did say that perhaps you want to keep the quality control just as a safeguard for at least the rest of the year to see, hopefully, 18 stay and gets to where I hope it is 17 was, basically. And really, that's the conclusion. So at the end of the day, very healthy organization, meeting your Move to Work metrics, and resolving the final findings.
And in the midst of continuing, developing, and improving the organization, which, you know, it takes a lot of energy, a lot of work, put strain on the staff to keep pace with all the improvements and additions that are occurring.
I have a quick question. Are excess reserves still subject to recapture by HUD?
Technically, technically, yes. It's a hotly debated subject because MTW agencies were initially exempt from this requirement. HUD has issued guidance basically saying that, no. And if it's determined that you're not utilizing your funds, then they could still be subject to recapture.
I think if you are showing no progress, no development there, but as you see, there's renovation occurring, ratting, so I think you're safe. But that's why we always point it out, you have to stay focused on it and continue to make these projects occur and improvements occur. If you do that, we believe you'd be okay. Anything is possible, although the economy is better, but, you know, you never know what happens at HUD. But there's certainly a lot of other people that they could go take money from that are not meeting any goals or showing any improvement.
How about if you have some plans on the table, but they haven't quite been defined yet, how would they look at that?
Well, you want to enter into formal commitments, so if you have a commitment to commit your funds, then that should protect the funds.
And that's why we always make sure we put that note in there, so hopefully, they're reading the report, like I know everyone here reads, that shows the commitment. We try to spell it out for HUD as best as possible, because, you know, they have a tough job to do, and we want to make sure they do it correctly. It certainly is protecting you.
Yeah. Thanks for your presentation. Is this, I'm used to getting like an audit packet with a booklet, is this the complete audit and all the documents, just in presentation form? With the management letter, or are we also getting an audit booklet? Okay. So, secondly, the cash on hand went from 3.7 million to 6.45 roughly million, which is a significant jump. I wanted to know, what do we, what is typically a healthy cash position for an organization like ours, or a cash position range?
Well, I think there's a couple of things there, because, you know, some of that was a transfer of investments, and you have ongoing development occurring. So it's not just like you're static and you're just maintaining or operating your property. So as you continue to grow, add units, you know, you need to get to some type of static operation, which would never be less than three months, in my opinion.
Right. HUD's perfect measure is six months of operating expenses
Yeah.
to beat your reserve, and we typically would remove housing assistance payments from that number. So we're looking at 2.5, if I'm doing the math correctly on the screen, there's 3.5 million. So 1.5 being six months.
1.5 million. So essentially, definitely not less, so six months, removing HAP would be 1.5 million. Definitely not, you're saying you would recommend actually a year, so it'd be 3 million. And we're currently at 6.45, although that includes, I guess, the HAP payments, I haven't done the math to take that out.
Well, transferring the investments over as subsequently moving, you know, assets.
Oh, you have operating, there's two reserves, large numbers, 1.8 million that's still sitting there in the rehab reserves that you have actually already spent, so that 1.8 million is now gone.
Okay.
I assume it's been spent, most of it was.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's already gone, so now you're down to, no other factors to consider. You're down a third of that already. So it's looking like after the last commitment of the operating funds to MGDC, that you're going to be down below that level. I would expect you to be below that, if anything, very shortly.
That, meaning the 3 million?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I'm not particularly concerned about the calculation errors because the size is so non, it's so trivial in relation to the operations. But my question is, it sounds like it was due to selecting wrong flat rents, but was it also due to not reaching out to tenants to recertify in a timely way, and could you talk a little bit about what should have happened and what did happen?
Okay. In the past, we had problems because recertifications were completely missed and/or started late. Here, we did have a couple of recertifications that were still technically late, three of them being because you didn't do one in 2016. So we had to say they were late for '17. One of the control issues that we had is that we had eligible residents that had earned income, so they had jobs, that were earmarked as being biannual, or skipped recerts where they shouldn't have been. So in essence, they were skipped over, the system was marking incorrectly, so therefore, the staff missed it. That didn't occur anymore, but basically, there was a couple that were a little late, and you couldn't implement on the year basis. So you were either a month late because you didn't give them sufficient time notice.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does, thank you. That's all my questions.
I have one more question. Does it typically take eight months to complete this financial, 2017 financial report?
No, we're usually, typically are on the six-month mark. I mean, I think with development and some of the changes with having MGDC come on, come on, and the RAD conversion, and getting some of those numbers finalized, and then just getting here. I think typically, we're here July. That's our typical month we're here. I think just out of scheduling is why we were here in August, or now. Couldn't hear last one.
I mean, it takes quite a bit of work.
Right.
Because you were on site in July, right?
June.
June. They're on site in July, and they wanted to do the presentation in July, however, with the volume, they decided to do it in August.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make a quick note to the record, that both Commissioner Adair and Commissioner Ovakowski arrived at the meeting a little bit late, but are here now. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda, we'll move public comments on non-agenda items up to the, for the next item. Anyone in the audience which makes a presentation can state your name.
Vicki Moss.
Okay, I think you can go right there. And your city of residence can...
Illinois.
Okay, limit your comments, if you could, to five minutes, please, or less.
I did have some program on, so...
Could you state your name again in the microphone, please, when you sit down, Vicki? Thank you. Make sure it gets recorded.
Vicki Moss.
I do, I have one.
I have more if you need them. I'm here as a representative for the WIN program, Women in Need Recovery Transitional Program. Before I begin, Bethany, who is our executive director, asked me to extend her apologies. Her and most of the board are at an NA convention in Florida. They left early this morning, so they couldn't be here, and I told her that I would fill in. So, this program was conceived in a group that I used to facilitate called a Women's Wrap Group. It was a processing group over in Urbana when I worked at Prairie Center, and Bethany was in that group. And we used to talk about the need for this program in this community. Because one of the things, if you don't know anything about recovery, stable housing is something that is needed for everyone, but especially for an addict who is trying to get their life back on track. So we had people coming out of residential or coming out of the Department of Justice with no place to stay. So Bethany ended up becoming one of these people, where she was homeless, she had children. She would sit in my office, she would cry, we would talk about options. And here, about a few months ago, she called me up and said, "We're going to do this." And she wanted to know if I would be on the board, and I told her absolutely, because I do believe in it, because this is needed. This program focuses on phases, that where the first phase is the people will reside for a few months, and they will focus nothing but on recovery. They will focus on their treatment, they will focus on 12 steps, they will focus on sponsorship, they will focus on the meetings, everything that they need to do to maintain that sobriety. So then, they move on. After about three or four months, we're asking them to obtain employment, so that they can then start paying back, they will start paying rent to this house and start paying living expenses. And the goal is that each phase that they move into, it'll be like three phases, each phase that they will graduate after 12 months. And the goal is that after they graduate, and if they're able to maintain their sobriety, they got employment, they've got their life on track, we want them to come back and mentor to the other women who are now first coming into the program. So it's really something that is needed in this town. We would like to partner with the Housing Authority on this, and so that's why I'm doing the presentation today. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. It sounds like a very good program that you're implementing, because everybody needs housing. And you cannot fault people for doing things, and they're changing their lives because they need to get a place. And that's why a lot of people revert to going back the wrong way, because they don't have a place and they can't advance. So I do understand what you're saying.
Absolutely. I would like to add that every board member is also in recovery. I have 19 years' claim. Roxanne Grantham has 20 years' claim. Marla Elmore has almost 30 years' claim. Bethany's got like five years' claim. And so we all have sustained claim time. We're all in positions of respect in the community. We hold down respectful jobs, and we have developed a life for us. And, you know, people, when people first come out of prison, or when people first get in to come out of treatment, they think that they're castoffs, and that's not it at all. I mean, we're living proof that you can turn your life around if you're given the opportunity. And I think this program is exactly what is needed that will provide the opportunity for these women.
I think so, too.
Just so the board know, we did meet earlier this week to talk about some of these issues as a group and community partners that Danielle kind of orchestrated for the organization.
How many women are we talking about?
Well, that's still, this is still up in the air. We would like to have as many as possible. But initially, we would like to get at least four or five, starting out in the program, and then transition. Now, we understand that we're probably going to have to have more than one property to do this, to be able to grow this program. But depending, it's going to depend on the size of the home that we're able to have, is how many women we get.
Excuse me, can I say one thing? When you said to decide on the pens of the home, that mean with the Housing Authority partnering, and then getting a place where the women can stay, or just individual stay, or what?
Well, right now, we're at the early stages of working with them in order to provide a partnership, maybe some resources, including a home.
Yeah, because I know we had gave that kid program in Urbana a home, and that would be a good thing that we can get a house for them, too, like that.
We are working toward that effort.
Thank you.
I do have business cards that I'm going to lay up here at the end of the table for Bethany and myself, so...
Thank you. You know, you can give those to Ashley, and we'll be certain that all the commissioners, I mean, Lily, sorry, I always do that. You can give it to Lily, and we can be certain that all the commissioners get it.
I was wondering why she was looking at you like that.
I know, right?
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Tamika Davis Nunez. I am a peer mentor for First Followers. It's a nonprofit organization that helps people come home from prison, find employment, and felons in the community help find jobs. I present to you today, I'm a living witness of coming home from prison and not having anything with four children. I present today, I was in a halfway house before it closed down off of Church Street, and while I was in the halfway... and while I was in the halfway house, the only thing that they told us to do was go down to the Champagne Library and fill out applications. The only reason why I knew anything about computers, because I took computer classes while I was incarcerated, to try to, you know, maintain in the community while I was home. However, I went to a, into a relationship, because I didn't have anywhere to go. And it was a bad relationship. I have a scar on my leg. I called the house to, is a domestic violence house, to help me out, but I had all my kids. They wouldn't accept me and all my kids because of the ages. So, my friend, she helped me get into Douglas Square. I had to pay market rent, I had a car, a vehicle, I had to go back and refinance my car, and I'm still paying on it. It was a struggle coming home into society without anything, without a chance, without a push, without a shove. I had nothing. I didn't have anything. So housing is good for women to come home to, to find somewhere to go, you know? It helps them, it helps them get on their feet. Because I stayed in Douglas Square, I only stayed there three years. And when I stayed there the three years, I was able to save, and I was able to meet Ms. Robin, who pushed me out there to get a house, because I worked for the university. So she helped me organize things, you know, put everything into perspective, and she really did push me out there. And that's what it's for, people to get help. If you've got children coming home out of prison, it's not easy. You know? So, and it's just, it's just not easy. It's not easy, coming home from prison and not having nothing and nowhere to go. Because you don't want to make the wrong decisions, you always want to make the right decisions. First Followers, you know, the reentry with us is excellent, it's an excellent program. It helps people get on their feet, it give them a rebound. When you feel like you're back against the wall, they can always come to us, we always help, you know? And then, you know, helping people, period, you know? So, yeah.
Thank you. Can I just, I'd like to remind her, it's one five minutes.
Good afternoon, I'm James Kilgore, I'm the co-director of First Followers, and Tamika's one of our peer mentors. So, I want to talk specifically about reentry housing, and a program that we've put together. I think the Prison Policy Initiative recently conducted a survey, and they found that formerly incarcerated people were 10 times more likely to be without houses than the average person. And Tamika's one example, we have a couple of other peer mentors that are going to speak about their experience here. But we've been operating for about three years as a drop-in center, two days a week. And what we find is that a large number of the people coming through our doors, who are coming home from prison, don't have a place to stay, or they're staying in housing insecure, or in abusive situations. So we started working on this as far back as 2016, when we took all, we took our peer mentors out to CU Days and to other venues, and we handed out a survey to ask people what they thought were the major challenges that people faced when they were coming home from prison. And it was jobs and housing, jobs and housing. And if you look at, if you look at the report, you'll find that 43% of the formerly incarcerated people that we surveyed, said they had been denied housing because of their background. And 85% of the people that we surveyed, and this is an amazing statistic, said that they thought local authorities should be providing transitional housing for people coming home from prison. So that's why, that's why we're here today. So, following up on Vicki Moss's proposal, we want to talk about housing for reentry as well. We think they're complementary, they work together, there's a gap. There's no reentry housing for men coming home from prison in Champagne, Urbana, and we want, we want to, we want to change that. We have a program that we designed based on our research, that we call First Steps Community House. It has, it's a four-stage program for people coming home. The first stage of that would be, we would, is pre-release. That is, we've talked to the IDOC, we've made arrangements, so that we can communicate and visit with people before they come home, do some kind of basic intake, and have them be prepared for our, for our program. Secondly, when they come, when they come out, there'll be an orientation program, that orientation program is going to include a needs assessment, giving them a plan of action, and connecting them with the services that they need. We will also give them a peer mentor, a personal mentor from amongst the ranks of the First Followers peer mentors, who have been through the system, and who have an understanding of what the problems are that people face. Then, we're going to immerse them in computer technology, because we know that people coming out of, Tamika was lucky enough to have computer training in prison, most people don't get that. We find people, when they come home, when they want to look for a job, they go pick up the newspaper and start looking in the want ads, which doesn't get them very far. So we're providing that kind of computer, that kind of computer technology. And the last thing we think is part of the orientation is, we want to give people a tour of Champagne, Urbana, right? People have been away, our target group is really people who have been away for like five years or more. This is a different, a lot of the landmarks they know are gone. They need a reorientation to be able to find their way around, to find their way around. And then, once we've gone through that orientation, then people have an individual program based on their needs, based on their goals, which will be set in a concrete plan. We are very big on education and training. We, one of the mentors that will speak here just finished a master's degree, we have another mentor studying for a master's degree. We're also big on getting people employment opportunities. Tamika and Cassandis, who's going to speak, they work at the university, but it was a long, hard battle for them to get secure, secure employment. But we're trying to get people secure, and secure employment opportunities. We don't want people working at Taco Bell, no offense to Taco Bell, for five years, that's not an opportunity, that's, that's living on the edge of survival. So, and then finally, we want to have a stage where people are being prepared for transitioning out of the house, for employment, and for all the support that they might need, as well as helping them accumulate some money, so they can be able to move out of the, out of the program. And I just, the last point I want to make is that we are, our slogan for First Followers is building community through reentry. So our program is not just about getting people into good, into good jobs, or into educational opportunities, but we also want to instill in them the idea of giving back to the community, the idea of helping to deal with, address some of the problems that we face in the community, of the idea of keeping people out of prison, out of jail, out of the school, the prison pipeline, and taking them down a different path. We believe that, in the peer mentoring system, that those of us who have been incarcerated, I mean, I spent six and a half years in prison myself, so we believe that those of us who are incarcerated have a way of connecting with people who are coming home, and combining that with professional staff, we can develop a program on a small scale, to begin with four or five people, but use that as a pilot to do, to do much more, in terms of providing reentry for people. We have three to 400 people on parole in Champagne County, they need some opportunities. Thank you.
Do I have one quick question?
Sure.
Do you have a transitional house now?
We don't have a transitional house now.
So the individuals coming back into the community, where are they living?
Where are they living? Well, some of them will tell you where they've been living, but they're living with, they're often living with relatives, they're living in, sometimes they're living in motels, sometimes they're sleeping in their car. I mean, they're, I mean, one of the things that's important to recognize is, the IDOC does not release you, once you finish your sentence, until you have an approved place to live. Otherwise, you serve half of your parole time in prison. So the IDOC would rather spend $60,000 keeping you in prison for another year and a half, than to put some money into housing in the community. But that's a whole other issue. But my point is, people are housing unstable, and when you're unstable in housing, everything else is unstable.
All right, thank you.
Okay, my name is Cassandis Hunt, and I have been a resident of Champagne County for 40-plus years. And I come here today representing the First Followers for two different reasons, two main reasons. One is that, by me being an ex-felon, when I came home, when I got ready to be released over 10 or 15 years ago, I was told that I wasn't able to parole home to my mother's house, because she stayed in housing. And housing wasn't accepting exfelons on their property. So that made my mother had to work harder to move out. But everybody don't have that option to be able to have a parent that can be able to do that. This program means a lot to me for the second reason, is because it's touching the men's. It's touching our men's, our men's are falling so hard, and without the men's, we don't have a solid foundation. Us women are trying to do our best that we can with our kids, but without that strong man figure in the home, and being able to help, the kids are falling, they are falling. That's why so much going on now. With the First Followers program, being able to catch these men as soon as they come out, to be able to gear them in the right direction, before they're able to come home and be influenced in the wrong direction. And the most important thing is to be able to know that when you're paroling, you're going to a safe environment. You don't have to go and sneak and try to sleep on your family's couches and stuff like that, in the process of maybe getting them evicted from where they live in it, because an ex-felon is not supposed to be on their lease or in their home. That's hard by itself, less known to try to find a job in the community and not be able to get good employment, to be able to even take care of yourself. So you're not just putting a burden on yourself, you're putting a burden on your family members, and you're putting a burden on the community. When I first got involved with the First Followers, I was just fighting for what most people would think was just a healthcare waiver, but because I was an ex-felon, I could not get that healthcare waiver. I fought my hardest, but everybody don't have that extra oomph to make them want to fight. They give up once they get a door slammed in their face. With the First Followers standing behind me, they gave me the strength, and they gave me the encouraging words I needed to want to continue to try. Now I sit here today with a three-year employment at the University of Illinois, something that I would have dreamed about, but wouldn't have thought I could have accomplished if I hadn't had a group of people behind me, constantly telling me that I could do this, not the group of people that may, I may have left the streets with, that was telling me that it was a slicker and an easier way for me to do it. All people are not bad that end up being incarcerated. But when you come home, and you don't have nothing but the skills you left with, that's what you're going to go back to. I heard Vicki Moss talking about the recovery program. I'm also a person in recovery, with 15 years clean, but I can truly say, even that right there, when I wanted to get in a program like that, I had to go all the way to Springfield. I was in Springfield, I completed the Gateway Program, I went into a transitional house, I was able to live in that transitional house and be promoted all the way up to being what they call the supervisor of that house. But when it was time for me to come home, I had to come back to Champagne County, because God rest my father's soul, he had passed away, so I had to come back home. And that meant I had to come here to try to find a job, try to find housing, try to do all that again, because I wasn't able to originally come home to my community, where that it would have been easier if I could have came to Champagne County from the beginning, and been able to find job, find housing and a job. I would have been able not to have to start all over from scratch again. I come here today because I know that there's a lot of housing stuff going on right now, but I know that us being able to be granted a house to start this program, maybe starting with three or four men coming out of the correctional centers, us meeting with them before they come, them being able to be mentored, just like I was mentored, just like Tamika was mentored, just like the rest of the people that's in our program has been mentored, to be able to mentor them, to give them that up, to know that just because you have a felony, or just because you've been incarcerated, your life don't end there.
Okay. Thank you, that was good. Okay.
He grew like this.
I'm going to try, I'll try. My name is James Corbin, I'm from Urbana, Illinois, and I am a mentor, intake specialist for First Followers, and I see this on a daily basis. These guys coming out, they don't have a job, so they don't have anywhere to go. Where do they go? Like you said, that's a good question. If depended on a crime, they may be able to parole with family and friends. A lot of them can't. I had a case that came in last minute, right before closing, and this guy, he had nowhere to go. He was actually thinking, he was actually already plotting or planning, and looking behind storefronts where he could sleep. You know, that's what he was about to resort to. He was about to go there and actually find cardboard and say he could sleep behind, let's say Savalot, or another store. This is really kind of, I think that's kind of sad for a progressive community, especially like Champagne right now, all this building is going on and everything, that you can't even have some type, somewhere just to put these men. Human resource is the number one capital for any business. We just throwing these men away, we could put them back to work, back to use. They're not just throwaways. That mentor he was talking about, who just finished his master, that was me. You know?
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. So, and I came a long way, I've been, I've been back and forth, in and out of prison. I've been shot, that's how I'm in a wheelchair now, you know? And I'm originally from Chicago, but I understand that there's still potential. We need to reassert these guys back into the community, we could use them as mentors, turn it around. These are the biggest, like, right now, we got this little quick crime spree that's going on. But I guarantee you, if we had these guys that was coming out of this jail, and we had them to speak like this, we could, we could settle a lot of this. Because they already seen the worst, and they could straighten up the other ones, and we could use this, instead of throwing this away. But we need that reentry place drastically, because I would say eight, or, yeah, eight out of 10 of the guys that's coming through, they're actually homeless. How can they go get a place if they're don't, if they're just getting out with a jail record, and we helping them find a job? According to Maslow hierarchy of needs, shelter is number one. And we all know about it, everybody in here probably been through that several times. I know I have, but that's one of the hardest thing to deal with. And they can't just go to public housing, which a lot of their families may be in, because public housing don't allow that. So where are we at? And then we got another, well, that's a whole nother issue, I was going to say, because right now, certain areas actually restrict these guys, and don't allow them to come in, because of this, maybe five years or three years, you know, that's ludicrous. But, that's what I'd like to speak on, yeah, that's right. So with that case, with that guy, that came in at the last minute, we had to come up with the funds, they left a call on me, so I said, "Well, we'll take it out of our budget." We don't do that. And then we was calling township for help, and all the other organizations trying to find help, and we had to put this guy up. The guy's doing well now, he's doing excellent, he has a job, he's now finding, he has a, he has a nice girlfriend too, but that's something else, but he's doing way, you know, he's getting his life back in order. His quality of life is moving back to where it's supposed to be. Now you got to pay, now you got somebody who's now a paying tax member, he's bringing money back in the community, he's talking to young guys, telling them, "Hey man, stay away from, don't do that." See, it's a plus, plus, plus. And I think as, if we're going to move forward as a community, we could then use these resources instead of throwing things away. We could become 90%, efficient with the talent that we bringing in. And a lot of these guys have a lot of talent, a lot of skills, they've been through the hardest, they made it, the mind is focused now, we not dealing with the people that probably went in. This is just something I want to say. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you guys.
I don't have a direct question, but I have something to say as a result. I want to say, thank you so much for taking this time and speaking with us, and we met earlier this week talking about that. And I know all, I'm speaking on behalf of most of the commissioners here, we've had conversations around reentry, we've had conversations around looking at our admissions policy, to better situation to allow reentry, so the housing authorities, we hear you, and we're listening, and we're dedicated to making it work, so keep working hard.
Yes, we should, because man, commissioners...
Yes, we should, because Commissioner Henry talked about if we could catch them before they even get here, if we could let them sign up for housing while they were getting out of prison, that they were on good behavior, so that when they came in, that they be ready to go instead of getting rid of all that stuff so many years and all that crap. So we talked about that a whole bunch.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Thompson and I'm the president and owner of VA Inc. We're located in Champaign, Illinois. We are a minority contractor. We've been in business now for over ten years. We are a union contractor. And I am here today to follow up with the Housing Authority. I've been talking with the Housing Authority for quite some time. I'm probably over the last seven years about contracting as a minority contractor on some of the Housing Authority projects. And I have been, it has been unsuccessful. I recently reached out today when we met and we talked about some of the issues of minority contracting on Housing Authority projects. And as a minority contractor, you know, my responsibility is to create jobs and be able to offer service and construct projects. And I've been doing it for ten years. Normally, I have a, annually, I probably, eighty percent of my workforce is probably white Caucasians. And occasionally, I am able to get minorities on my project. The problem is them getting into the unions. That's always been an issue. And even when I'm on job, some of the minorities that are in there, if they good workers, the larger contractors got them working. So sometimes I call and say, "We don't have any minority, they're all out working." And so my role has always been trying to find ways to, how do we get more African-Americans in the apprenticeship? And like I said, I started ten years ago and I got out there and worked hand to hand with a lot of those guys. It's not easy. The pay is good, but it's not easy. And you really need training. And I know from some of the Davis Bacon Wagers, I was just Googling those, you know, carpenters, thirteen dollars and seventy-two cent. Seabed Mason, ten dollars and ninety cent. Labor, eight dollars and forty-one cent. Well, that's not enough to make living wages in Champaign, Urbana. You know, union wages are thirty-some dollars in wages and twenty-some dollars going toward their fringe benefits. And these guys are getting paid weekly. That's good money, that's money somebody could take care of their family and have some spending money. I am hoping that in the future, that the Housing Authority looks at, how can we start partnering? How can we start looking at possibly unbundling some work? RFPs, negotiating contracts, so that we can hire some African-Americans and minorities and get them in the trade. And I will be attending tomorrow for the youth bill. I am familiar with that, I looked at that program many years ago. That program does provide opportunities to partner with community development and trade organization and construction firms. I've had several conversations with the unions. You know, they would definitely be interested in partnering as well. Because we need to get guys, we need to have people getting paid living wages. And construction is a good industry. And you know, it has provided a lot of wages, you know, for people over the years. I'm hoping that this new CEO of the Housing Authority will continue to do the work that we need in the community as far as job, workforce, contracting, and that we can be able to see more African-Americans on contracts with the Housing Authority. That's my presentation today. If you guys have any questions, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Anybody? Anyone have any questions?
I want to make a comment. Thank you for making those comments. And you brought it up about youth bill. And so just to follow up, we're having a meeting with the community partners tomorrow at from ten to eleven thirty a.m. to talk about youth bill. And the unions are our major partners and help facilitate opportunities for young people to get into the pre-apprenticeship programs. So I appreciate you mentioning that. And we've already had conversations about setting up a meeting with the unions to try to facilitate a relationship along with that way.
Just a comment. So I'm sending the commissioners a report that came out in the last twelve months, specifically on this issue of diversity in the building trades. This is actually something that we have talked a lot about for decades. And there has been almost no movement. So the time for talk, in some ways, is over. If you look at the minutes, going back to the, when I served on city council, and this was fifteen years ago, we talked about, how do we bring in contractors and subcontractors that are folks of color? How do we bring in minority contractors? We talked about issues of bonding, we talked about issues of the unions not being open. And if you go back further, and I talked to my friends who are older than me who are kind of hitting their pickaxes against this issue. This is just, just to illustrate, I come from Gainesville, also orange and blue, Big Ten University. And if you drive down the street in University Avenue, we also have our University Avenue, you see as much building happening in Gainesville as in Champaign-Urbana. The one difference is if you look at the crews, it's Latinos and African-American men and women on those crews across the town. You come to Champaign-Urbana, there is billions of dollars of work being done. You just walk onto a work site and just look. You don't actually, I mean, the data is there and I'll send you the report, there's interesting data. But the issue is that if, you know, we have a moving to work program. We expect folks to work, low-income folks, black, white, brown. And the issue is that a category of people are excluded from the jobs that actually pay at the level that they could get off of the moving to work program. And so our community has to address this piece. We've spoken at the city council recently on this issue again, more conversation. I said the same thing to the new administrator, Carol Mitten. She's looking into it, she's supposed to have a conversation with folks. I know Marlon Mitchell from First Followers has really been carrying this issue, as has Patrick and others in the community. And I guess I just want to put a bright light in, this is not the first conversation. Patrick, thank you for coming and speaking. It's almost like you get tired of it after a while because it's the same thing over and over. We are, we just looked at the financial health of the Housing Authority. We are spending massive amounts of community resources, public resources, and resources that we've gained and reinvested in building. And we have to figure out how to get, catch three and four birds with that net, not just one, right? So it's great that we're building public housing, but we gotta help put kids, get kids into the pipeline for construction trades. And we have to hire folks. And that means we might have to really set some goals in terms of our hiring practices and then force the community to meet those goals. And I'm really hoping, David, you can be with the trades union side. I'll send you the report, there's a lot of interesting information there. And really start helping to open up for these jobs. Because a lot of folks who are building are actually from out of town. They're not from our community. And they need jobs too, and they deserve a right to work, I'm not saying that. But it's like, we have talent right here in our own community that we are not tapping. And then if you look at the unemployment rates of African-American boys and men ages sixteen to twenty-five in our community, it's crazy. I mean, then we wonder why we have gun violence, why we have these things happening. We should not be surprised at all because we did not have employment opportunities for kids coming out of school. And we know that when they don't have employment opportunities, the chances of them starting to get a job at twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven is so much harder than at eighteen and nineteen. And that, I'm so happy that we're doing the youth bill. I really want to congratulate you, David, for bringing that to our community. There'll be a representative from my office there tomorrow. I've been getting, sent it out to like twenty people yesterday in networks. So I'm really hoping that we can tackle this issue and that that Housing Authority can play a leadership role in that.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea because we could tap into that because some of the developers that we're hiring to build stuff, that could be an issue that we addressed that, how many in that development are African-Americans or Latinos? And then that way, to know if they're gonna be willing to build for low incomes, they should be having people on their staff that they can get paid the same as they're getting paid.
Yes. And may I say a few more, you know, a couple of things. You know, the apprenticeship program with the union, it requires those guys, when they get into apprenticeship, and you know, they may not know anything, but it's six hundred hours of credit, so that's four years, that they have to get six hundred credit hours, you know, go to training and get that training, and they need that training. Because the construction site is dangerous. You know, you can not, you can lose your life out there if you're not trained correctly or understand safety and being able to have safety. Over the years, I've had one white female work for me. I've never had an African-American female. There is one that was in the trade and I tried to request her on a job. And I was told, "Well, she's working." So I thought the BA was being untruthful with me about it. I said, "Well, where is she working?" So I went out there and I talked to her. And she basically, she said, "Look, I worked for these people twelve months out the year." She said, "You probably gonna never be seeing me and I've been working for them for the last ten years." And you know, it, you know, we, as a contractor, it is my responsibility to try to get more diversity in the unions and be able to pay, create jobs, that's my role. And that, I take that very, very seriously. And so I'm here today to hope that this new environment with the Housing Authority leads to seeing other minority contractors in different trades, different divisions of work, being able to work on Housing Authority projects so that we can create jobs, jobs provides people living wages, take care of their families, you know, things that we know people need. And so I say that and I'll end. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a response. I think everything that's been expressed is very, very appropriate. And I think that a lot of things that have been said, as a Housing Authority, we have certain guidelines and things and restrictions that we have to follow as under HUD. But I also think that moving forward, with that in mind, I think that it's a monumental task, but it's something that can be accomplished. But I think that we really need to partnership with Urbana and Champaign because there's been a lot of things that they can do to take this into consideration. And I think, I think I've been here twenty years since I moved back. And I've been here twenty years, came back in ninety-eight. And I personally know maybe ten African-Americans that maybe retired that were on a site downtown, on a high-rise building or building hog farms out there in the south portion of Urbana. Ten, that's not many, it may not even be ten. And I just think that the city of Champaign and the city of Urbana should encompass, if we're gonna go forward with this, should encompass and partnership with HUD and what we can accomplish. And they should place a higher priority on this issue, this critical issue that you just raised. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Hello, I'm Kelly Mirakowski. I'm the manager, currently the manager for the grants management division with the city of Urbana. And I wanted to let you know that this will be my last meeting because I have obtained a job in the city of Jacksonville, Florida. And will be their new affordable housing and community development administrator. So I just wanted to let you know that at some point, there'll be a replacement. So at this point though, I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You'll be Miss Certain.
Anyone else? At this time, I'd like to honor someone that's in our audience. We have an outgoing commissioner, Clyde Walker. Clyde's been a commissioner for the past fifteen years, I believe, and done a wonderful job. Went through a lot of different executive director, well, actually, a couple of executive directors. But really gave your heart and soul to being a commissioner. And the commissioners here wish you well, we appreciate everything you've done. And we'd like to honor you with a plaque. And I'll just go ahead and read it real quickly to Clyde Walker, commissioner. Here's two thousand and three through twenty eighteen. "We cannot repay our debt of gratitude to you. We simply have to acknowledge your countless generous acts, pledge to move forward in your spirit of unselfishness, and pay it forward to those who committed your, those you've committed your lifetimes to help." "With a humble heart, we thank you for your dedication and exemplary service." Also, you get to take your picture home?
Fifteen years, that's a long time.
It was charitable, too.
I'm not sure what to say, other than it's all been a learning experience. And from front to back, it's been a learning experience. My first couple of years here was like, wow. Because a lot of things were not right that needed to be gotten right. And as a greenie, so to speak, I was, through odd circumstances, put into the position of being sort of an acting ED at the time. And that alone, just that brief period taught me a whole lot about what executive directors, CEOs go through in these agencies and what kind of knowledge they had to tap and experience to be able to do what they do. And so I got just a taste of that for a brief period. And then I initially got... And so I got a, just a taste of that for a brief period and then I initially got into being a board member. I was approached, but my initial intention was to do as much as I could for kids because that's what my first efforts towards helping community was, was focusing on youth. It started from when we did the first redevelopment at Parkside Mansion in Champaign and I noticed a lot of people weren't, were doing a lot of complaining but weren't speaking out when they, when they needed to give some input, when the city needed input. So I sort of kind of helped initiate some of that. And so my focus was because we need to know where, what environment our kids are going to be in, you know, during the next incarnation of the housing redevelopment. And along the way, because of a lot of other things and side issues that I began to learn through, through the Housing Authority, my experience at the Housing Authority, I, I sort of lost focus on the kids. Even though in the back of my mind, I kept trying to find ways of reconnecting what I was doing with kids and youth. And somewhere along the line in this last handful of years, I began to reconnect with that through my martial arts. And so I'm, right now, even though I'm no longer going to be serving on the board, I got a lot of, I'm excited about some things that I'm going to be doing soon related to ELNAC, which is the Lehman Neighborhood Action Committee in Champaign and Urbana, I'm sorry, hoping to infuse some of what I've learned here and, anyway, I'm not going to go into the details, but I'm just happy to have served and I don't know, I don't know what else to say. Probably talked longer than I thought.
So at this time, we're going to take opportunity to recognize our Employee of the Month. It's a new initiative that we started and we're working hard to build a team environment. So I'll ask Curtis, along with his supervisor, to come up so we can present him with the Employee of the Month Award, our first Employee of the Month Award. On, what was that, Wednesday or Tuesday? Two, on Tuesday, we had an employee appreciation along with team development and that was the opportunity we took to recognize our first Employee of the Month. And that's a program that we decided to do. We wanted to build a team and continually grow on where the organization started to continue forward. We had a great opportunity to work together and talk about some of the goals of the Housing Authority as a group and we had a couple of Commissioners stop by and participate. Commissioner Rose and Commissioner Henry stopped by. And we also had Congressman Rodney Davis, representing from District Thirteen, stopped by to say hi along with going on tour. So Curtis was the center of attention that day though. And I will allow his supervisor to talk a little bit about him. Each supervisors are allowed, each staff and supervisors are allowed to submit an individual for Employee of the Month, is reviewed and then a decision is made. And with our program, at the end of the year, we have an Employee of the Year, which the Commissioners get the bio of all the employees and why they were recognized for Employee of the Month and the Commissioners make that decision on who's the Employee of the Year. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to John so you can talk about Curtis.
As a supervisor, it's always really exciting to get an employee that makes your life easier. And I was really excited to get Curtis. He's been wonderful. He is, he's, I don't think you've ever missed a day. Maybe, very few. Never late, never late, ever, ever. When there's extra things that need done, he's always first person in line to volunteer. We had a couple of issues where we had to do what's called a fire walk and everybody is like looking at the floor except for Curtis and he's like, me, me, me. He says, I'll do the whole thing. So, so that's the kind of attitude that I like to see in employees and he's got the fire inside and I'm sure you're going to do very, very well. So congratulations.
So for his efforts, he received a certificate along with a trophy, a gift certificate for twenty-five dollars, an Employee of the Month shirt and entered into the opportunity to win Employee of the Year. So again, we just want to say congratulations and thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. Number five, approval of minutes. We have two meetings, April twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, regular meeting and June twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, regular meeting. Are any corrections to those minutes?
Yes, we have an amendment to June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. The Resolution twenty eighteen eighteen, approval of sale of lease agreement for fourteen oh one East Main Street, Urbana. I wanted to just read the amendment for the record. Upon return from executive session, Commissioner Lewis made a motion, Commissioner Rose second, and approved the resolution amended as follows. The sales contract shall include the following. Seller as tenant and purchaser as landlord shall enter into a lease agreement at no cost to the seller. Part two, restricted use clause on a quitclaim deed that will restrict further use of the property solely to the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center to serve low and moderate income youth of the city of Urbana, including residents of affordable housing sponsored by seller. Number three, limitation of debt. The restriction, restricted use clause shall also restrict the use of the property as collateral for any debt without notification or approval of seller, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. Number four, revision, I mean reversal to the Housing Authority. Should a purchaser fail to comply with any terms of the conditions of the restricted use clause or if the purchaser transfers ownership of the property without the consent of the seller, ownership of the property shall revert back to the seller, which is the Housing Authority.
Okay. Thank you. Any other corrections? Can I have a motion to approve both? We'll do this on this forum, two minutes, two minutes for April and June.
So, both minutes.
Second.
And it's as amended, correct?
Yes. But the amendment is written, read by David.
Yep, okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
I'll abstain because I was not at the meeting.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
That motion passes. Go on to new business. First one is Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-five, authorization to close the Haven at Marketplace. Who's going to speak to that?
Cindy will take it out.
Cindy?
The Haven, as you know, is our new project. We've been at, we've been working on very diligently. And so this, this resolution basically just authorizes the Housing Authority to move forward with the actual closing for the project. The overall project cost is twenty-six point five million dollars, five hundred eighty-nine thousand zero eighty-two to be exact. It's being financed with tax exempt bonds and four percent low income housing tax credits. The Housing Authority's sales proceeds from Skelton along with MTW block grant funds. And the owner will be Prospect Senior LP as the owner entity. Oak Grove Four, the Housing Authority's affiliate, will be the managing general partner. So what we're asking for is that we would transfer the development site, the land that we currently own, from the Housing Authority to Oak Grove so that we get, and then for the donation of the tax, the donation tax credits, permanent financing, a loan in the amount of nine million dollars, of which five million is the sales proceeds and four million is our MTW block grant. That's at one percent interest, amortized at thirty years. There will be two separate housing assistance payment contracts. One will be for the eighty-four RAD units that come from Skelton. Those are new vouchers that come with the RAD transaction. And then the second is for thirty-six vouchers that will be for the MTW project based, for our local MTW project based voucher program. We will be assuming as the managing general partner, an obligation to cover the operating deficit guarantee on the project. That runs for a period of five years and it does not exceed five hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars in aggregate over that five-year period. And then finally, authorization of the executive director to execute all the necessary documents to finalize the closing pursuant to the requirements that JP Morgan Chase, who's the lender, Richmond Capital is the investor, the Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority, which is the issuer of the bonds, and IDA, which is the issuer of the donation and the housing tax credits. Any questions?
One question. The resolution mentions that the HACC sale proceeds and MTW block grant funds, it mentions that, then later it says four billion is from the MTW block grant funds, which you said at one percent interest, amortized at thirty years. Can you explain how the MTW block grant funds, what they are, how they're used and what the interest is about?
Okay. Whenever we put any secondary financing into a tax credit project pursuant to the IRS, it must go in in the form of a loan. So it's, it's a soft loan that's really only available for payment out of cash flow from the project. And so the terms are always pretty minimal like they are here. The five million dollars is actually the, the sale of Skelton that we will get the cash when we, when we close on the sale of Skelton. And the four million dollars was actually reflected by the auditor. It was part of that reserve number you saw that we had already committed. That's what the four million dollars represents. That's reserves being held by HUD, but we've already committed those for this project and they were part of the commitment that the auditor reflected.
Okay. From HUD reserves and essentially we have an interest because it's required to be a loan.
Yes. It has to have interest because it's required to be a loan under, under tax credit requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Or I entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-five. Anyone?
I second it.
We didn't have a motion.
We need a motion.
One amendment approved, twenty eighteen dash, twenty eighteen.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I second it. Roll call.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
Next item, Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-six, authorization to finalize the sale of Skelton Place.
The board previously approved the purchase contract when we first received the offer for Skelton Place. This resolution basically authorizes us to proceed with the actual sale, which we hope to do next week, if not tomorrow. More than likely, it's going to be next week at this point. But basically, we are moving forward with the offer that we received. We had received an appraisal of four point eight million on the property. We had got the offer for five million, so as long as it exceeds appraised value, we moved forward. All of the residents of Skelton as of tomorrow, maybe today, Robin?
Maybe today.
Maybe today. The last resident will, everyone has been temporarily relocated to other comparable housing units, but they retain their guaranteed, guaranteed right to return under the RAD program to the Haven at Marketplace once the construction is completed. Construction is estimated to be completed at Haven in, in April of twenty twenty. So what this resolution does is it actually allows us to move forward and close on the off, on the sale and authorizes the executive director to execute all documents necessary to finalize the sale and that the sales proceeds of Skelton will be placed into a separate financial account and the HUD Declaration of Trust remains in place on Skelton Place until we close the Haven. So in other words, HUD has said you can sell Skelton, the DOT has to stay there, the money has to go into a segregated account and we will release the DOT once Haven closes. So we'd like to move forward with this and that's, that's what this resolution authorizes us to do. Any questions?
Can a buyer now re, redevelop that building or does he have to wait?
No, he can go ahead and redevelop. The Declaration of Trust relates only to public housing, so it won't really impact anything that he does. He's buying it cash, so he doesn't have any debt. There's no lender or anybody that's going to be concerned about it. We hope to, you know, we're, we hope it's a matter of six to eight weeks is all to get the DOT released, once we close Haven.
And I believe he planned to do some rehab work to it anyway.
Yeah, exactly. He's got, he wants it ready for next school year, twenty, in twenty nineteen. So he, he's got a lot of rehab he's going to do anyway, so it won't impact his ability.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved, Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
Next, Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven, approval to increase the permanent loan for Bristol Place.
Bristol Place is also getting ready to close. Hopefully, September eighteenth, maybe October first, somewhere between September fifteenth and October first, we hope to get the closing done for Bristol Place as well. And the board actually previously approved the closing resolution for Bristol at our last meeting because we thought it was going to close earlier. The developer has come back and requested consideration of an increase in the, in the loan amount. The Housing Authority, as part of our closing resolution, authorized a loan of one point five million. The developer has come back and requested an increase for two hundred thousand to raise that loan to one point seven million. And that is additional cost, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of that cost is a, a cost to a third party to monitor the infrastructure, the streets and things that are going to be put in that was unknown at the time of the original development. And then there's some other miscellaneous soft costs that have been incurred as part of the project being delayed because originally this project was going to close much earlier. And so I said I'd bring it to the board, so here it is.
And we did evaluate it financially and I recommend that we move forward with the increase.
Any other questions or comments? Someone move Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven? I'm looking for someone to move Resolution twenty eighteen.
Motion to move twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven.
Okay. Second. Okay. Roll call.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
Next item, Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, approval of pre-development loan for Oakfield Place.
Oakfield Place is our project that we're doing for revenue purposes in the city of Henry. And we, as Oak Grove Development Corporation, our affiliate, is actually the sponsor of the nine percent tax credits. And so we were required to pay the tax credit reservation fee. And under our previous resolution, when the board authorized the project, we did not ask for any pre-development funds because the, we had actually entered into a joint venture agreement where the partner that we're, that the developer that we're partnered with, the architect and engineering firm that we're partnered with, is actually going to pay all of the third-party costs, such as the appraisal, the environmental and all of those things. But because we were the sponsor, IDA required us to pay the tax credit reservation fee and a twelve thousand dollar fee for the tax credit preparation. Other than that, there wouldn't be any other costs. So we're asking for a pre-development loan not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for this project and it would be repaid at closing.
So moved, Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
Next, we have Chief Executive Officer's report.
We provided a, a good description of our reporting from this last few months in the board packet. And so I'm going to briefly go over a few items and then allow the supervisors of the departments to talk briefly about the report. If the Commissioners have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to ask. First, I just want to announce, early on, probably in late April, we entered into a MOU with a company called Chris. Chris is a company out of, was an organization out of Vermillion County that services seniors in transportation and also counseling and other type of services. They're funded by the east central Illinois area on agents, on aging. We applied jointly with a grant and received it for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and that's for an employee to be hired through Chris in order to service our clients at our senior buildings with resources. And so they'll be circling around a number of our buildings, working with our clients in need, helping provide them with resources and services and recommendations to other type of services. So I was just happy to report that. I also mentioned earlier already that we're having our community, local partner, meeting tomorrow with Youth Build. That grant is estimated around one point two million dollars. That meeting again is from ten to eleven AM tomorrow. There were some concerns raised in the city of Champaign related to the Haven on Marketplace around busing and we are working with MTD in order to resolve those concerns. So we're close to having that resolution. We've been in contact with the city about it and I'll keep you guys updated as we move forward with that. We reported last month that we started the Office of, Housing Authority's Office of Constituent Services. Just want to report that it's going well. We're getting a lot of calls, we're responding and the community seemed to be happy of our responses thus far. We currently have a RFP out for staff training and with those And with those trainings, there's a number of trainers that we have. We plan on bringing and training on-site to train staff and offer cross-training opportunities to help build the awareness of what each other does and also give opportunities for staff members to be promoted in the future. Also, last week, I was selected to testify at a hearing for the State Senate Special Committee on Housing. The hearing was had in Champaign, and it was focused on rent control. We also talked about source of income protection for individuals, especially individuals with housing choice vouchers or other type of housing assistance. Expansion of the Tax Savings Program, which is a program that gives an initiative to landlords that rent individuals under our program, a tax break on their homes that they own. Also, we had a presentation with the county board meeting. At the county board meeting went well. The county board members were excited and happy that we came out and explained to them what we do and how our program helps our community. And lastly, I just wanted to announce that HUD sent a notice out today that they're increasing the admin fee to, from seventy-six cents, from seventy-six percent to eighty percent. And so when we always talk about the admin fee is only seventy-six cents on a dollar, now it's eighty cents on a dollar. So that's the end of what I want to report. And at this time, if the commissioners does, do not have any questions related to what I've mentioned, I asked John to come up and talk about the development.
I have some questions on your memo. Should I ask them now or should, do you want to, until after the staff presentations?
On what now?
Your memo, the executive director's report. I had a couple of questions.
Okay. If, if, can we answer, can we ask those questions within that department?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm not always sure what department it is, but I'll try.
Okay. All right. If not, then we'll follow back up and make sure we get it. Thank you.
Okay. A little update on our RAD conversion. The auditors mentioned it during their presentation, and they showed the money amount at the bottom. We have completed work in the apartments at Washington Square and Steer Place, and we'll be moving on to work in the common areas. And we're currently working at Yeoman Place and Columbia. And we were able to get all the units ready that we needed for the Skelton relocation, so those people are all moved. Bristol, in my report, that's a little old because we turned them in early, says work at Bristol will be starting soon. Well, they have started.
Yeah.
They got a street out and they're removing top soil, so we're going there. And Cindy just mentioned that at Haven, we should be starting fairly soon this fall. And the new office building, we got our, we had a little delay in getting permits. Couple of things that we needed to change, and there was some discussion about a couple of items. And so there was a few delays there, but now they're currently working in that building. We should be done, with the delay, we should be done, still be done by the end of the year. Pinewood Place in Urbana, we applied for a grant, a permanent supportive housing grant there, and the city of Urbana approved all the zoning changes that we would need. We got a special use permit. We should find out October sometime, Cindy?
Yeah. We have gotten several requests for clarifications and questions, which is a very good thing. The amount of the grant that we actually applied for was two million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And it's to do the twenty-four units of supportive housing at sixteen oh six Colorado. So we're very optimistic based on the feedback we've gotten from Ida to date.
Well, just to mention also, the state of Illinois, Narro, National Association of Housing and Redevelopment officials held a conference in Rockford, which Ida, along with HUD, was a major part of those presentations. Ida asked us to come and present along with them related to this application of that grant. So in talking with them, I felt that we was in a good position to receive it. So keeping our fingers crossed.
Just let me make one comment. I attended that conference in Rockford, and I think that we should be able to be in good standing in terms of getting that grant. We have four staff members that made an excellent presentation, and there was a lot of information that they passed out. They presented a video on the development in Mohammed that was well-received. And I'd like for those ladies, just stand up for a quick second, please. They were a little nervous, but they did, they did, they did a wonderful job. And I told them that that evening, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, they did an excellent job, so we totally appreciate you guys taking that opportunity to share what we're doing as an organization with the rest of the state housing authorities and HUD and Ida along.
I'm sorry I missed it, but I had to work.
I had one more development thing, David, is that the Urbana Town Home site, which some of the board members will recall, we actually entered into a new government agreement with the city of Urbana back in 2013. But that, what we were doing at that time did not move forward. But we had a kickoff call this week to kind of reactivate the Urbana Town Home site. So we're moving forward to begin planning on the Urbana Town Home site with a Brinshaw Development. When we had solicited them for the Haven, we had included Urbana Town Home site as well as a project to work with them on. So we'll bring more information back to the board as we move forward with that project.
Just, just a question on that. That was one of the questions in the memo. So it says in your memo that after a couple of attempts, we decided not to pursue the rehab of Aspen Court. I'm very happy that we're at the table to look at Urbana Town Homes. But I'm, I know, like, this last week, numerous people were relocated out of Aspen Court into hotels because the situation there is so, so bad. And so I, my office has been in contact with, with folks who are being shifted around as a result of the condition of those properties. Obviously, that's not a housing authority property, and we have no relation to it. But I'm wondering what happened to those conversations? Why we decided not to pursue rehab? Because I think we would have done much better rather.
The current, the current, the owner at that time was asking an unrealistic price for the property, and it was not viable. It was subsequently sold to a different developer out of Indianapolis who did receive a nine percent tax credit allocation this past year and is in the process of rehabbing that under the nine percent tax credit program. There is a small HUD direct project-based, powered project-based rental assistance contract directly from HUD for forty-eight of the units at Aspen Court. And it is important to realize that the Housing Authority has nothing to do with that rental assistance. We make no claim on it. We really wanted to purchase Aspen Court to demolish it. We didn't feel that it was really rehabbable. But the new owner has and has moved forward. So we withdrew because we just couldn't make it work with the previous owner.
And I guess my question is, is there anything we can do? Or is it out of our hands completely?
It's really out of our hands.
I understand that it's, I'm aware of the HUD vouchers.
Right.
And that property has degraded and degraded and degraded over time till it's to a point where there's no other place in our community that is, in Champaign or Urbana, that is dealing with the tenants, that what the tenants there are dealing with. So I just think it's a real tragedy, and we've been trying to figure out what is our points of leverage. Obviously, the city of Urbana has some points of leverage there.
If someone has it, you certainly should be contacting HUD because it does have a project-based rental assistance contract on it. And that contract, my, my understanding, and again, I don't know, but my understanding from, from what I've heard, when they received the nine percent tax credits from Ida, that contract was going to be renewed by HUD upon rehab. And it is still an active contract. It was not terminated. There's a very lengthy process that an owner has to go through to terminate that. So I would say someone needs to contact HUD's multifamily division because that's really the entity that can deal with the tenants. There's, those tenants are protected under the Uniform Relocation Act.
Exactly.
And they absolutely should not be going through whatever they're going through.
Yeah. It's terrible. Thank you. That's really helpful direction. Thank you.
But we are not involved.
No, not at all. We have no involvement.
Yeah, I understand, although that tip is helpful, and I will follow up with it.
Yeah. That's all I have on development. John?
All I have left was Oakfield Place, which you already covered.
Right.
So that's my report, yes.
Anything on the property in St. Joe? Are we out of that deal?
We're out of that deal.
We're out of that deal.
Okay. I hadn't heard, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, they were unable to provide us with the special use permit transferable to us. So.
How about Talona?
We're looking at a new piece of land. We're going to go down and see if we can get beat up again. But we have a new piece of land this time. So, but everything needs to be rezoned. There's nothing in Talona that's zoned multifamily, so. But we do have a new piece of land, and hopefully, next month, John, after we get closed on these other transactions that we've been busy with, we're going to go back and start some negotiations on that land.
Okay. Thank you.
A kick in the butt is still a step forward, right?
Aha, exactly.
Thank you.
There's no multifamily in Talona.
Next, we'll have the property manager report. Robin, do that report for us.
I think Jean's going to put it out. Yep, there it is. Okay, so these are effective as of July thirty-first. Again, I created these reports early in August, so things have changed. But especially, like, one of the big things now is that Washington and Steer, it says that there's units offline, or they were back in July, but there's not any longer. And we are leasing those up. Washington Square, I think currently might have one vacant.
It had one as of this morning.
As of this morning. Steer has a few more.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. But we are going through the waiting list to get people in there. Yeoman and Columbia, the, two, Columbia actually has two units offline currently. One is used for a hotel unit for the renovations, for the residents to move there while their apartments renovated, and then they move back. And one apartment there is used to store all of the construction equipment. Two people from Skelton actually moved to Columbia Place. Hayes Homes, nothing, no renovations being done there, and that's full. Tenant charges are about the same, well, are the same and about the same that they were in June. Outstanding for Steer Place was a hundred and twenty-one dollars for the month of July. They issued ten notice to vacates. Two were pending court action, and I do believe both of those, the evictions have been granted in the month of August. So Yeoman's doing good. Columbia does good. That eight hundred and twelve dollars of charges outstanding, that was from two residents, I believe, and they have paid their money up. So everything is fine there. Work orders outstanding. There was three outstanding at Washington Square. Again, those have been completed, but the maintenance men do really, really good job of getting the work orders in and then completing them right away. Annual recertifications, because most of them are triannual, we don't have to do those. But as you can see, we have done a couple of interns at Steer. Waiting list. As I said, Stacy is now going through the waiting list for Steer Place, so next month, that'll, that hundred and fifteen will go down. That's it for the RAD portfolio.
Just, just one second, Robin. I just wanted just to mention to the board that, you know, Robin stepped in, handled both the RAD portfolio along with the tax credit, mixed finance, affordable portfolio. Because one of our staff members fell ill, that staff member is due to return September sixth, and I actually saw her at the Senate hearing, and she's doing very well. So we're excited about that and appreciate how well you've been doing while she's been away.
Thank you. I'll be excited to have her back. So affordable portfolio. Again, we still have one occupied. I think it's a different unoccupied unit at Aqua Trace right now. We had someone move out from a three-bedroom. In July, it was a two-bedroom, so we did switch it, but we are working to get someone to fill that spot. Prairie Manor, there'll never be anything open there because people love it over there. Maple Grove, we actually have three vacant right now. And Stacy is working on two applications currently, so very shortly. Those will be full scattered sites. Because I can't rerent those, those are a hundred percent, so my down units are just my down units, and Skelton is going away as well.
Any questions?
So just a couple of questions with regard to evictions. When someone's income drops due to a job loss, is the subsidy adjusted? Or do they, it's adjusted if they indicate job loss?
Yes. So what happens is we'll do an interim.
Okay.
And they'll just have to bring in proof, a letter from their employer stating when they lost their job, and then we'll do an interim, and then their rent is adjusted.
Okay. And just since we've, at Cunningham Township, we've had several folks come in who are being evicted, who had subsidies. And we're at some of these locations, I think I've spoken to several of the folks listed in this data. And I just want to mention that both townships have eviction prevention monies for those who can maintain rent. Sometimes that's not the case, especially if you're doing the subsidy adjustment. It should be the case that if they lost their job, then it could be adjusted. But for folks who may have gotten behind in rent, I would encourage the housing authority to connect those tenants to the township prior to taking them to court. And so if you can, and staff can help get the word out, those are new programs, so they're not really well-known in the community. And it's really important that the townships can play a role in helping people keep their subsidy if the only issue is they have back due rent. They can pay rent now and they have income now, or the subsidy has been adjusted, but they have back due rent that they can't pay. That's our job, and that's what taxpayers pay into our funds for. So.
Okay.
And I know you had a conversation about, with RPC, about Maple Grove and the transitions. I'm just wondering, since we consistently see Maple Grove is underoccupied, what are some of the strategies that were discussed in that conversation to change that pattern?
Yeah. We, the big, well, two things. I think one is those units are also all required to go through the statewide referral network. So part of the issue was the way it was working with the statewide referral network. And I think we've clarified that if the statewide referral network, from the day that Robin has a vacancy, she reports it to the statewide referral network. We then have to wait thirty days to get a, get a referral from the statewide referral network. If they don't give us a state, a referral, then we can go ahead and rent to somebody out of the shelter without it going through the statewide referral network. So I think there was confusion there until I pulled out the agreement and went over it with everybody to say, you don't have to wait until, if the statewide referral network doesn't give us something in thirty days, we have a right to rent that to the next person. So we've clarified that. The main issue that we're having is the people in the shelter can't get the utilities taken care of. Many of them have very large utility bills, that are back utility bills. And so working with regional planning to try to get those utilities paid is sometimes time-consuming. That's been, I think, our biggest number one issue, Robin, has been the utility issue.
One of the residents, her power bill was over a thousand dollars that she had to get paid. So getting that kind of money was hard, you know? So what, what we've said to the people at regional planning, when they do their intake for the shelter, from their very first meeting, they need to start working with those clients about, do you have a past electric bill? Do you have past water bill?
Yes.
And working to get the funds to get those paid. That way, when it's time for them to come to us, then it's paid, you know? And they can just move right on over.
Yeah. And just for the record, we have some strange magic with Ameren, that we can get people put on payment plans. We do that a lot in our office. And I'll reach out to Rebecca as well at RPC, since I know she's case managing and not Housing Authority on that piece. But it's good to know that that's the pinch point. And also just, so it sounds like it, does it mean that it has to stay vacant for thirty days essentially while you wait?
Yes. It's required, that's, that's a written rule of Ida under the statewide referral network. We cannot put anyone in there. We have to give the statewide referral network thirty days from the date of vacate. So one of the things we talked about is, because we were waiting before till the unit was ready and reporting it always at the first of the month, and I clarified with Robin note, reported the day you know someone's moving out. reported the day you know someone's moving out. So the thirty-day clock starts ticking, which allows us to re-rent it quicker. But we absolutely, the state does not, they will not move on that issue.
Okay.
We're also aware that not only Township and somebody else helped with the power bill, but also Previna, I think the lady's name is Saint Mary's or something, because she paid somebody for the power bill with fourteen hundred dollars, I believe. So they also are helping. So I don't know if a lot of people are aware of that. But it used to be Previna, but they changed the name to what, the hospital now?
Oh, ISF.
Presence.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much outside of RPC's utility assistance program, which is very limited in certain times of the year. The only folks providing utility assistance are the faith-based community. And there is quite a bit of assistance, but it's, you know, it's shopping. But we do hold a lot of those relationships, and I'll reach out to Rebecca and see if we can play a role in helping move forward.
Just to add one thing, a couple of things. We'll make sure we get notices to the staff and also on all our resource media accounts about the new resources that both the townships have related to rent assistance. Also, Robin mentioned that the manor at Prairie, that's our property in Mohammed, that everybody loved that site. Last night, we did a community meeting with the community, and one of the residents was gracious enough, since we don't have a community room there, to let us utilize her unit. We were in the garage, but it was still like the best place you'll want to be. Robin was there, and she probably can attest, along with Lily, that the residents were really happy. They had some small issues, but they're overall pleased with their property and excited about the opportunity to be there.
Any other questions?
Next, we'll have Tamika come up from the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Good afternoon. I am going to be really brief. For the Housing Choice Voucher, currently we have, well, as of July 31st, a thousand and seven units occupied, and our goal is eleven hundred. We do have new vouchers that's been issued out twice this month as well. So we probably have about forty or so new vouchers holders that's currently looking. So hopefully, we'll be able to get the numbers up. One of the problems, we are having terminations on average. We're looking, you know, about eleven or so, ten, eleven each month. But being able to see what the average is, that'll also help us be able to understand how many to pull from the waiting list in the future. So that will be a great help. For the project base for Dorchester, as of eight seventeen, Sycamore and Hamilton, their numbers have actually gone down as far as their vacancies. Sycamore now has three vacancies, and Hamilton has two. So I know that was a concern as well. And so they are working hard to try to get their vacancies looking better. They also have hired a new compliance specialist, and so hopefully, they'll be able to move in a quicker fashion in order to get things leased up. And they are also in training this week. And so hopefully, they'll be able to develop some other strategies to get their units leased up as well. And I think that maybe it's for me.
Did you say anything about termination? Have you been, big rate of that termination?
Well, we're having, right now, for year-to-date for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, we've had seventy-one as of July 31st. So that's a little bit, you know, ten or so each month, ten-point something each month. And so most of them, there's been terminations for calls. Either the recertifications aren't being completed, they're moving without notice. So that's always a termination for calls as well. But then we also have had twenty-two of the seventy-one that were kind of self-sufficient, either zero half or either, many of them, they're starting to relinquish their vouchers. I already have one, twelve-thirty, she's already put her notice in that she just wanted to relinquish the voucher that she feels she's self-sufficient now. And so she's going to get her master starting January, and she's working full-time as well. And so she's just relinquished the voucher. And we're seeing that more and more as well, which is always a great thing.
One thing, just to add, thank you so much, Tamika. You know, she runs the department that had the one audit finding, but made some vast improvements. So continue that hard work with your staff and tell them we appreciate what they have been able to do in terms of making that correction. But also, it's misleading when you see termination and you see all these numbers. But every time a person leave our program for a reason, it's under the claim of termination, regardless of what it's for, whether it's for self-sufficiency reasons or it's for regular eviction or cause or purposes. So that's always misleading when you see those numbers. So thank you for breaking that down and clarifying what those numbers mean.
Yeah, it is shown on the report, EOT for voluntary self-sufficiency. Yeah, that means they relinquish their vouchers.
But this word termination usually has such a negative connotation, so.
Exactly. And it's not. That's why we broke it out, so they'd understand it, yeah.
Anna, could you come up, please, and provide the local self-sufficiency program report?
Hello. I just have a couple of things I wanted to point out. We've been working really hard to try to get, you know, more community partners and different things because our goal right now is to try to do more workshops for our participants, to educate them more about resources out there, to help reduce barriers, or just educate them about what's out there so they can improve their self-sufficiency goals. So I just wanted to make note with the help of Lily and Ashley and LSS staff that we have a couple of workshops already scheduled for September. The first one's scheduled September 6th. It's a financial literacy class. It's from one to three. So Heartland Bank is coming in to talk to people about it, like a small loan program where they can improve their credit. And then they're gonna talk to them about various other ways they can move towards, hopefully, homeownership-type stuff. So anyway, there's also one scheduled September 7th. Crisis Nursery is gonna come in and talk about their services because childcare has been an issue for people maintaining employment. So they're gonna come in and talk about the services they can provide. That's September 7th at eleven. And I think that, is that two hours, two, or just one? I hear one, just one? So, okay. So we're really excited about that, because we, I talked to somebody over the phone who was asking about being referred for homeownership, and so I was telling her we still partner with Habitat. And I was telling her about the financial literacy program, and she was so excited about it. She put it on her calendar, so she's gonna come. And with that, Habitat sent out an email to us saying that they are taking applications for homeownership, September 11th from 10:00 a.m. to September 21st, 10:00 a.m. So between that time period, they are eligible, they can go in on their website and apply. Let's see. One other thing, we finally have gotten one participant in the Believers and Achievers Program after lots of ironing out, starting that whole situation. Believers and Achievers is going to train the person to, you know, gain better skills in front office work. Hopefully, she can get a placement in a dental office job where she can get paid sixteen dollars an hour. We've been in contact with that participant, and she has been coming up and giving us updates, and she's been our guinea, guinea pig, so to speak. She's been helping us iron out the process so it can be smoother for the next person, because we do have somebody that's gonna start September 4th classes as well. And the participant that we have in there currently has next week, and she will graduate. So I can't wait to report the progress on that next time. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Anna? Just want to add that hosting the programs or helping facilitate the programs for our clients is something new to LSS, so thanks for really working hard to make that come to fruition. And also, along with the Believers Program, we're also working with CVS to bring a pharmacy assistant program here. So we've been in contact with them, and they want to come out. And we've worked with RPC also to coordinate this where they can offer opportunities to train individuals within our program in the community to be pharmacy assistants. And they're looking to hire some also for their pharmacies, so.
Thank you.
Matt, come up and do the financial report. The commissioner said five minutes, that's it. It wasn't me, Matt. I appreciate it. We had a, hey, you saw the, you saw the audit number, so we totally appreciate you, you know, five minutes.
I was gonna say, if anyone's made it this far, I. Congratulations, but I think most people are required to be here, so.
Bless her heart.
The budget to actual for July, just wanted to highlight a few things, just a reminder on the, kind of the format, is we do an agency-wide budget to actual presentation, and then behind that is our RAD portfolio and affordable portfolio, and those roll up into that property management column that's on the agency-wide budget. So if there's anything specific to the property management, I'll highlight it on those other reports. The first thing I just wanted to go over is, in the income section, you'll see HCB admin fees. The total is fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, budgeted of eighty-nine thousand. So there was about a seventy-four thousand dollar gap from typical budget. We did have, how HUD funds the admin fees, they do an estimate of your leasing, and then funds you with a little bit of inflation in there. And then they do a year-end reconciliation. So based on their year-end reconciliation to get closer to actual, they determined they had overfunded us, so they've started basically recapturing the admin fee that they would be, or holding it back, what they would, what we would typically be owed. They're taking off a portion of that, so that was the reason why our actual funding was less than we had budgeted. Also, in the HUD funding section for the Housing Choice Voucher, I see ninety thousand listed there. That is just, I've mentioned this before, but that's half funding that we received that's outside of our Moving to Work block grant. We just want to show that separately on the, on the report for our RAD, half related to our rental assistance demonstration program, our BASH vouchers, and we have twenty-three other tenant-based vouchers that are outside the Moving to Work block grant. On expenses, just looking at the HCB, the Housing Choice Voucher administrative expense, you'll see other administrative expense toward the bottom of the page, eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. This was the last payment that we made for the interim Housing Choice Voucher Director that we had and Housing Choice Voucher Consultant. So that was for their last two months of work, and they're classified as temporary employee expenses, how we classify that. So that's why that amount is much larger than normal. Also, on the next page, for MTW Activities Consulting, under Moving to Work, you see forty-four thousand, seven hundred. That was actually for Cindy Hararian Associates for six months worth of work, so January through June, of the monthly consulting as well as submission of the 2017 Moving to Work annual report. So you'll see there's, you know, it's quite a bit more than normal, but we, that's because our budget is spread out. If you, since that was for six months worth of work, you'll see our monthly budget's seventy-five hundred, so that works out to forty-five thousand, so it's right in line with our budget. Moving on to the RAD portfolio, so on page thirty-one, for Steer Place, other admin expense, you'll see an amount of six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. That was moving expenses as part of the renovations going on. They were cleaning units and moving tenants back into units that had been renovated, and just, there's that part of that, part of that process that's wrapped up now. On page thirty-two, in Supplies line, the first line, you'll see larger amounts for Steer and for Columbia. Those are related to, we replaced almost all of the mini blinds and the units at those places. Not everything at Steer, but everything at Columbia. So those were just kind of large one-time expenses that occurred in July. On the affordable portfolio, just, nothing specific I wanted to highlight, but just with Skelton Place, because we didn't know how far into the year that, you know, we would be closing, that the sale would happen. We didn't, we didn't start budget for everything on the revenue and expense side. So you'll see higher, you know, the totals for all the affordable portfolio being more than the budget. But then on the other income line, you'll see that that was thirty thousand more than normal because it's still receiving operating subsidies. So if you look at the bottom line, basically the bottom line number for net operating income for the whole portfolio, you'll still see that that is, that is nine thousand dollars above what we've budgeted. So as a total, everything is still flowing the way that we anticipated. Any questions on the budget to actual report? Okay, if no, if no questions, then I'll jump into real quick, quickly on the cash disbursements for July. You'll see six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and then the detail of that follows. We're going backwards here, so July, and then we'll do June, since we didn't have a July board meeting. First, on page thirty-eight, you'll see an amount for Building Systems of Illinois, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty cents, and that was all related to the RAD renovations. On page forty-two, Malat Morse Leonati for ten thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. That was for architectural services for the new office. On page forty-seven, I'm just highlighting things that were not typical, over ten thousand dollars. That's kind of the gap I use. From page forty-seven, Burns Clancy and Associates, sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seven cents. That was for pre-development expenses for Bristol, civil engineering fees. And also on page forty-seven, Brinshaw Development for ninety-four thousand, fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. That was pre-development expenses for the Haven at Marketplace. And then I mentioned before, but on page fifty-five, Cindy Hararian Associates, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, where about fifteen thousand of that was related to the submission of the, oh, sorry, fifteen thousand of that was related to the interim voucher director and consultant that were through, through her firm. And then the rest of that, about fifteen thousand related to Cindy's submission of the 2017 Moving to Work annual report. And then for the, for the month of June, just looking at the total cash disbursements for the month of June, that's on page fifty-six. You'll see six hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, seventy-three cents. And the detail following that, just to highlight a few items. On page fifty-seven, Brinshaw Development, two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars, sixty-four cents for pre-development expenses for Haven at Marketplace. And then fifty-seven, continuing on page fifty-eight, Building Systems of Illinois, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, three hundred, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Twenty-six thousand, that was related to renovations for the new office building. And the remaining amount was for the RAD renovations that they're continuing to do, or are, or going on it during the month of June. On page sixty-two, you'll see Mountford University of Illinois for thirteen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. That was Moving to Work evaluation for the month of April. And then on pages seventy-two and seventy-three, you'll see another one for them, for about the same amount for their evaluation work in the month of May. And lastly, page seventy-four, you'll see Illinois Housing Development Authority, sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That's, Cindy mentioned this before, but that's tax credit reservation fee for Oakfield Place. That was part of the eighty thousand that was approved by the board covering that amount. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Matt. And again, congratulations. I know we was joking earlier, but congratulations on the work you did financially. We're in a very good situation, and you oversee that department, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other business?
The motion to approve those financials.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the financial report.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Opachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chenoweth.
Yes.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Yes. I second that. I'm hoping that we adjourn.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Opachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Opachowski. Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chenoweth.
Yes.